Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. Today is June 11th, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. We are here at the District Office, Room 13. As we call the meeting to order, let the attendance show that we are missing trustee Curfond is absent at this time. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries six zero. We now open from comments from the public on any closed session items.
We have no callers.
Thank you so much. And with that, we will adjourn for a closed session. We will return back for public at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. It is June 11th, 2024 at 7:01 PM. Welcome to our community for joining us this evening. We wanted to report out some of the items from closed session, including trustee Kerfond joined us at 6:04 PM. On item E1, we had a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Mailing. Item passed 7-0. On closed session, item E2, we had a motion by trustee Correa, second by trustee Sellers. Item passed 7-0. On item E4, on case number RMA-002218, we had a motion to deny by trustee Correa, second by trustee Cervantes. Item carried 7-0. And on item RMA-002262, a vote to deny, we had a motion by trustee Correa, second by trustee Mailing, and the item passed 7-0. And with that, we ask the Vice President Correa to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Those sitting, please stand. Randy Salut.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we invite up Senator Lozo, our interpreter, to share with us our community engagement information.
If you wish to address the board, please call 559-276-3150 or fill out a request form provided on the table near the entrance and submit it to the clerk of the board prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please do so when that item is called. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you may speak during the public comments section of the agenda. Si desea dirigirse a la mesa directiva, llame al número 559 276 3150 o complete un formulario de solicitud provisto en la mesa cerca de la entrada y preséntelo al secretario de la mesa directiva antes de la reunión. Se permitirán comentarios públicos relacionados con los temas de la agenda cuando se llame el tema. Los comentarios públicos sobre un tema que no está en la agenda se permitirán durante la sección de comentarios públicos de la agenda. The district welcomes other language speakers to the board meetings. Anyone planning to attend and needing an interpreter for a language other than Spanish should call 559-274-4700, extension 10150, by noon on the Friday preceding the board meeting or at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting, so arrangements can be made for an interpreter. El distrito da la bienvenida a las personas que hablan otros idiomas a las reuniones de la mesa directiva. Cualquier persona que planifique asistir y necesite un intérprete para un idioma que no sea español, llame al 559 274 4700, extensión 10150, el viernes antes de la reunión y antes de mediodía, o por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión, para poder hacer los arreglos para la interpretación. Thank you.
Thank you. We next turn to our presentations with our first being our student recognition with Dr. Boatwright sharing our Young Authors Fair winners.
Thank you so much, so I'd like to invite some people to come up. First of all, we have our, like you said, our Young Authors Fair winners. We have Navpri Kira, she's a sixth grader from Steinbeck. She won exemplary selection for middle school narrative or poem. We also have teacher Zia Yang, second grade class at Central Elementary. They won an exemplary selection for their K5 fiction class book. And we also have Alexis Rocha's fifth grade class at Central Elementary. They received the FCOE Foundation accolade selection for their book. And so we do have some students here that we'd like to bring up to see you. Let's give them a round of applause while they're coming in.
Navpri, congratulations.
A lot of her employees children. Gerdnitz texted me twice about audio quality.
Hi.
Congratulations, great job, congratulations.
Good job.
Very proud of you.
You guys are great authors, I love it.
Very proud of you.
Good job.
Good writing job.
We like coffee.
I don't know how that one would coffee with the pasta.
Good job. Good job, girl.
A lot of work.
Good job, very nice. Very nice work. Good job, sweetie. Good job. Good job, you're an author. Good job. Good job, buddy.
We have one more class coming.[1784.51]
It's an honor and privilege to be here in support of those who do so well in Central Unified. And tonight, it's all about the Bonner Award for Virtue and Character. Each year, we go out and visit those schools who've completed a written application for this award, to validate what it is that they wrote is actually occurring in their school. What we're really looking for in an embedded belief in the importance of character and virtue in their school, throughout their school. So tonight, I'd like to honor three schools who, every four years is when they have an opportunity to apply for this award. And next year, it'll be the middle and high school, but tonight, we're actually honoring three amazing elementary schools. So if possible, I'd like somebody to come up from each one of these schools and receive their special award. The first one is the Norman Ladell Elementary School.
You have to dance.
Congratulations. You want to say a few minutes? Want to say something? Okay. In other words, no. And the next one is Huden Kearney Elementary School.
And the last one, not the least though, is Teague Elementary School. The best part of this is listening to the kids when you go out. You meet with different groups and they talk to you all about the school. And the best messages always come from the students. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. It's an honor.
Thank you again, Dr. Franks. Thank you again to our Bonner Award winners and all the amazing work you all do. Continuing on, we move on to Mr. Collegian with employee recognition.
Thank you, President Singh. Good evening, Board of Trustees, colleagues, family and friends. Tonight, we have the distinct honor to recognize exemplary employees, retirees, for the 23-24 school year, who have given Central Unified a total of 655 years of service. That's right. How about a round of applause for that? And who have had a positive impact on our students, school, and community. Please allow us to honor our retirees this evening with some kind words. Please welcome to the podium Human Resources Manager Rosa Romero for their introductions. Thank you.
Diane Dee Dee Dowding, Saroyan Elementary School. She's a teacher TK, years of service 25 years.
Catherine Gobble, site Teague Elementary School. Position Teacher TKK, years of service 34. Sandy Casperian, Ladell Elementary School. Teacher Kinder, years of service seven. Robin Alcala, Madison Elementary School. Teacher Elementary, years of service 30. Susan Glover, Steinbeck Elementary School. Teacher Elementary, years of service 29. Marcy Hunter, Madison Elementary School. Teacher RSP, years of service 26. Teharion, Steinbeck Elementary School. Substitute teacher, reading intervention, years of service 25. Rachel Curry, Glacier Point Middle School. Special Education A2, years of service 22. Patricia Quinn, Child Nutrition, Cook Supervisor, years of service 27. Melanie Regosa, Payroll Department. Payroll Specialist, years of service 28.
Paul Burrell, Educational Services. Assistant Director of Instruction and Curriculum, years of service 36. Frank Duran Carbahal from Harvest Elementary School. PE Teacher, years of service six. Sherri Dones, Roosevelt Elementary School. Teacher SDC, years of service 12. Darren Miller from Glacier Point Middle School. Vice Principal, years of service two.
Joel Firdanansson from Central East High School. Teacher Business, years of service 26. Diana Haskins from Rio Vista Middle School. Vice Principal, years of service 29. Vincent Lebaskey from Central East High School. Science Teacher, years of service 17. Karen Suzie Martin, River Bluff Elementary School. Elementary Teacher, years of service 21. Eric Solomonsen from Glacier Point Middle School. English Teacher, years of service 11. Robbie Simpson from Harvest Elementary School. Nurse, years of service 11. Mateo Altamirano from our MOT department. He's a grounds worker, years of service 43. Steven Valentine from our MOT department. Grounds worker, years of service 31. Janice Bernal from McKinley Elementary School. Clerical Assistant 1-2, years of service 25. Kylie Copeland from Saroyan Elementary School. Instructional Aid, years of service 14. Jacqueline Holt from Saroyan Elementary School. Principal Secretary, years of service 12. Porchua Lee from our MOT department. Custodian, years of service 25. Isabel Macias from our Payroll Department. Senior Accounting Manager, years of service 11. Lisa Persons from our Food Services Department. Assistant Director, years of service 34. Carol Wilson from our Child Nutrition Department. Cook 1, years of service 20. Daring Young from Harvest Elementary School. Principal Secretary, years of service 16. Congratulations to our retirees. You've been an inspiration to our students and staff over the years. We wish all the best in your retirement endeavors, and we thank you for your contributions and years of service to Central Unified. And now to introduce our Employee Recognition Awards is our Director of Human Resources, Mr. Eliseo Cuellar.
Okay, the following individuals have been nominated by their colleagues and are being acknowledged for their outstanding work this year in Central Unified School District. This year's Certificated Substitute of the Year nominated by Jasmine Harika and Elizabeth Tekonoff is Armajeet Gill. Thank you, and congratulations. This year's Mentor Teacher of the Year nominated by Adrian Oswald and Desiree White is Carissa Villarreal. Thank you, and congratulations. This year's recipient of the Classified Rookie of the Year nominated by Houghton Kearney Principal Courtney Gendron is Courtney Grimm, Principal Secretary. Thank you, and congratulations. And this year's Certificated Rookie of the Year nominated by Joe Brocamonte, Carly Smith, Danell Urquhart, Justin Butler, Joshua Tabor, Erin Klein, and Ronya Aish is our teacher Holly Meager. Thank you, and congratulations to all of you for your hard work and efforts.
While we take a pause, there's some more seats in the front now.
Thank you again to our dedicated staff and all their families. So if we can invite those that are continuing on. We turn now to our Employee Association highlights. If our Central Unified Teachers Association President Laura Bolton is in. Welcome, Laura.
Got to turn it on. All right, good evening. It's really nice to see the light at the end of the tunnel. Only two more days. I have a short list of positives to share with you. Lots of positive results are rolling in from state testing, and so some of the sites are getting their preliminary results, and they're sharing those with us, and they're very excited. Glacier Point is one of those, and it was reported that they are out of CSI status, so comprehensive school-wide improvement status. So that's an amazing feat. Senior walks happened at our elementaries last week. It was really, really neat to see all those kiddos all grown, coming through, all those little ones, inspiring them. Lots of tears, lots of smiles, lots of photos. I was able to see some of that, so it was pretty awesome. May was Mental Health Awareness Month, and all the sites participated in activities. There were, and there are currently lots of end-of-year celebrations happening. I've been making my rounds, dropping off retiree gifts and site rep thank-yous, and so I'm seeing a lot of that. I've seen barbecues, I've seen water balloons, I've seen bubbles, I've seen popsicles, I've seen dress-up days, I've seen all kinds of stuff. Erica Segovia had an amazing shirt with her face all over. It was really great. And then Jim Costa came out to HK recently and spent quite a bit of time talking with the students and answering their questions, and so I thought that that would be something interesting to share with you. So that's all I have for tonight, aside from, I did get to attend the graduation last night, and it was really, really neat seeing the first graduation for Justin Garza High School. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We now invite up our California School Employees Association President Angie Aguirre.
Good evening, Board members, students. I'm. Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Ketti. Me and some of my E-Board are here just to help recognize our classified employees who retired. The ones who did, they've gave a lot of their time and energy to this district, and it's well-deserved. They did a great job, and we're sad to see them go, but I'm sure they have a lot of great plans ahead. Other than that, thank you guys for giving us this opportunity to talk. It's been a great year, and I look forward to next school year, and you guys all have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move to Superintendent Board. Community. Thank you. We now invite up our California School Employees Association President Angie Aguirre.
Hi, good evening, Board members, students. I'm.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Ketti. Me and some of my E-Board are here just to help recognize our classified employees who retired. The ones who did, they've gave a lot of their time and energy to this district, and it's well-deserved. They did a great job, and we're sad to see them go, but I'm sure they have a lot of great plans ahead. Other than that, thank you guys for giving us this opportunity to talk. It's been a great year, and I look forward to next school year, and you guys all have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move to Superintendent Board. Community. Thank you again, Dr. Franks. Thank you again to our Bonner Award winners and all the amazing work you all do. Continuing on, we move on to Mr. Collegian with employee recognition.
Thank you, President Singh. Good evening, Board of Trustees, colleagues, family and friends. Tonight, we have the distinct honor to recognize exemplary employees, retirees, for the 23-24 school year, who have given Central Unified a total of 655 years of service. That's right. How about a round of applause for that? And who have had a positive impact on our students, school, and community. Please allow us to honor our retirees this evening with some kind words. Please welcome to the podium Human Resources Manager Rosa Romero for their introductions. Thank you.
Diane Dee Dee Dowding, Saroyan Elementary School. She's a teacher TK, years of service 25 years.
Katherine Gobble, site Teague Elementary School. Position Teacher TKK, years of service 34. Sandy Casperian, Ladell Elementary School. Teacher Kinder, years of service seven.
Robin Alcala, Madison Elementary School. Teacher Elementary, years of service 30.
Susan Glover, Steinbeck Elementary School. Teacher Elementary, years of service 29.
Marcy Hunter, Madison Elementary School. Teacher RSP, years of service 26.
Teharion, Steinbeck Elementary School. Substitute teacher, reading intervention, years of service 25.
Rachel Curry, Glacier Point Middle School. Special Education A2, years of service 22.
Patricia Quinn, Child Nutrition, Cook Supervisor, years of service 27.
Melanie Regosa, Payroll Department. Payroll Specialist, years of service 28.
Congratulations.
Paul Burrell, Educational Services. Assistant Director of Instruction and Curriculum, years of service 36.
Frank Duran Carbahal from Harvest Elementary School. PE Teacher, years of service six.
Sherri Dones, Roosevelt Elementary School. Teacher SDC, years of service 12.
Darren Miller from Glacier Point Middle School. Vice Principal, years of service two.
Joel Firdanansson from Central East High School. Teacher Business, years of service 26.
Diana Haskins from Rio Vista Middle School. Vice Principal, years of service 29.
Vincent Lebaskey from Central East High School. Science Teacher, years of service 17.
Karen Suzie Martin, River Bluff Elementary School. Elementary Teacher, years of service 21.
Eric Solomonsen from Glacier Point Middle School. English Teacher, years of service 11.
Robbie Simpson from Harvest Elementary School. Nurse, years of service 11.
Mateo Altamirano from our MOT department. He's a grounds worker, years of service 43.
Stephen Valentine from our MOT department. Grounds worker, years of service 31.
Janice Bernal from McKinley Elementary School. Clerical Assistant 1-2, years of service 25.
Kylie Copeland from Saroyan Elementary School. Instructional Aid, years of service 14.
Jacqueline Holt from Saroyan Elementary School. Principal Secretary, years of service 12.
Porchua Lee from our MOT department. Custodian, years of service 25.
Isabel Macias from our Payroll Department. Senior Accounting Manager, years of service 11.
Lisa Persons from our Food Services Department. Assistant Director, years of service 34.
Carol Wilson from our Child Nutrition Department. Cook 1, years of service 20.
Daring Young from Harvest Elementary School. Principal Secretary, years of service 16.
Congratulations to our retirees. You've been an inspiration to our students and staff over the years. We wish all the best in your retirement endeavors, and we thank you for your contributions and years of service to Central Unified.
And now to introduce our Employee Recognition Awards is our Director of Human Resources, Mr. Eliseo Cuellar.
Okay, the following individuals have been nominated by their colleagues and are being acknowledged for their outstanding work this year in Central Unified School District. This year's Certificated Substitute of the Year nominated by Jasmine Harika and Elizabeth Tekonoff is Armajeet Gill. Thank you, and congratulations. This year's Mentor Teacher of the Year nominated by Adrian Oswald and Desiree White is Carissa Villarreal. Thank you, and congratulations. This year's recipient of the Classified Rookie of the Year nominated by Houghton Kearney Principal Courtney Gendron is Courtney Grimm, Principal Secretary. Thank you, and congratulations. And this year's Certificated Rookie of the Year nominated by Joe Brocamonte, Carly Smith, Danell Urquhart, Justin Butler, Joshua Tabor, Erin Klein, and Ronya Aish is our teacher Holly Meager. Thank you, and congratulations to all of you for your hard work and efforts.
While we take a pause, there's some more seats in the front now.
Thank you again to our dedicated staff and all their families. So if we can invite those that are continuing on. Yeah. We turn now to our Employee Association highlights. If our Central Unified Teachers Association President Laura Bolton is in. Welcome, Laura.
Got to turn it on. All right, good evening. It's really nice to see the light at the end of the tunnel. Only two more days. I have a short list of positives to share with you. Lots of positive results are rolling in from state testing, and so some of the sites are getting their preliminary results, and they're sharing those with us, and they're very excited. Glacier Point is one of those, and it was reported that they are out of CSI status, so comprehensive school-wide improvement status. So that's an amazing feat. Senior walks happened at our elementaries last week. It was really, really neat to see all those kiddos all grown, coming through, all those little ones, inspiring them. Lots of tears, lots of smiles, lots of photos. I was able to see some of that, so it was pretty awesome. May was Mental Health Awareness Month, and all the sites participated in activities. There were, and there are currently lots of end-of-year celebrations happening. I've been making my rounds, dropping off retiree gifts and site rep thank-yous, and so I'm seeing a lot of that. I've seen barbecues, I've seen water balloons, I've seen bubbles, I've seen popsicles, I've seen dress-up days, I've seen all kinds of stuff. Erica Segovia had an amazing shirt with her face all over. It was really great. And then Jim Costa came out to HK recently and spent quite a bit of time talking with the students and answering their questions, and so I thought that that would be something interesting to share with you. So that's all I have for tonight, aside from, I did get to attend the graduation last night, and it was really, really neat seeing the first graduation for Justin Garza High School. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We now invite up our California School Employees Association President Angie Aguirre.
Good evening, Board members, students.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Ketti. Me and some of my E-Board are here just to help recognize our classified employees
Next we move to Superintendent Board Communications.
All right, I will share the same thing that was already shared, which is that school is out on Thursday and so for us that means summer school starts on Monday. So, summer school is about to begin. Area Administrator Jeff Garrett has been feverishly working with all of the teams to make sure everything is ready to go. Just as a reminder, our programs do begin starting Monday, June 17th at 8:00 a.m. Our programs will be very, very active at River Bluff, Rio Vista, Central East High School. There will also be some programs at Roosevelt and we do have two classes that will be taking place at the West Fresno Center for dual enrollment opportunities. We are also serving summer meals. All of this is on social media and the website, but it is important when students are no longer coming to school each day that our families and you, if you have anybody reach out to you, know that we are serving breakfast 8:30 to 9:30 and lunch 11:30 to 12:30 at the campuses that I just mentioned, Central East High, River Bluff, also at Class, Teague Elementary, Biola Elementary and Roosevelt as well as was mentioned. Libraries, reading's always a good thing during the summer, libraries will also be open. The hours vary between the different campuses, so it's best to look at those online or in social media, but we will have our libraries open during the summer, Monday through, in most cases Monday through Fridays, at Central East, River Bluff, Rio and Roosevelt and at Biola Pershing Elementary, we'll have the library open on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, so there are definitely opportunities for families and if it's really hot, we also want to remind everyone that this summer we do have the Central East High School pool open Tuesdays through Fridays and Saturdays as well and they are offering swim lessons. Our spring grapevine, one of our new Public Relations Comms Officers' first tasks as she got started was to get our spring grapevine article going and it will go out to print beginning of next week. It's in its final stages of translation and so it will be mailed to all of the homes within our geographic boundaries to share in all the celebrations of our programs and our schools. And lastly, thank you so much for all of your attendance last night, our first night of graduations, Justin Garza and Central Island Homeschool made it a great start with incredible ceremonies for their students and I'm looking forward to seeing our graduating classes also tomorrow night and Thursday night. That's all for me.
Thank you Superintendent Davis. Any other communication from any board members at this time? Then with that, we invite comments from the public. So these would be an opportunity for the public to, whether in-person or online, to share anything that is currently not on the agenda. So this would be the time to submit. Trusty Clerk Curfond, do we have any comments submitted?
Yes, Board President Singh. Our first comment is from Andre Covington. And you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, thank you Board. It's Covington by the way, but thank you.
Apologies.
I'm here to address a safety issue with the track that we share here with Garza and Central East. Over 100 kids on the Central East team and over 100 kids on the Garza team are on the track at sometimes at the same time. There's been a couple instances where a discus almost struck a kid who wasn't paying attention because of the large amount of students that are out there working on their craft at that time. We would like, we need something on the record in writing that plans will be made for a training track to be built for Garza on the Glacier Point Field and there will also be a Garza feeder. And of course, Central East will continue at Collegian. As a parent of a student who now goes to Central East and is on the track team and is doing very well, top five in the Valley, my oldest daughter graduated from Central East, Track Star Scholarship to Fresno State and she's now gone on, she was on the reality television show with competition involved and she credited on national television that she credited Central East Track Team for giving her the base. She is now a wrestler in WWE and she's doing really well. We've also had Xavier Worthy, who just set the record for the NFL Combine, all-time record in the 40-yard dash, another member of Central East. It is a top program. This is a state program, the men's team won state championship, I don't have to tell you guys that, you should know that, just a few years ago. I'm a proud parent, I have two daughters, one currently here, one graduated, I have another son on the way and he's really, really fast also. So I would like for you to please consider it, shout out to the coaches who do an outstanding job, Coach Pulliam, Coach Davis, who have raised my kids on the track and not only taught them how to be great athletes, but given them some stability out in the world where they've gone on and they're hopefully go on and do some other great things. As a parent, two years ago, my daughter was a freshman, this was addressed by other parents who had children running for the program. Nothing came about, nothing happened, nothing's on the record, nothing was talked about or discussed. And then those parents, of course, their kids graduated, they went on, so they're not here to speak on it anymore, so it's up to me and other parents to voice our concerns. And it is something that when you see so many kids out there at the same time running around trying to compete, they're not really paying attention for the most part and it could lead to a situation that could be very hurtful to a student and we definitely don't want that. So if you could at some point address this on record, so this could be an agenda that we can address and maybe find some sort of way to make it happen. I think, I know several parents who are buying homes that are being built right around its corner so that their kids can be a part of the central track team. That's how important it is and that's how people see it as a stepping stone to greater things. As a concerned parent, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next comment is from Julie, no last name. Is Julie here? Oh, there, thank you. And you will have three minutes.
Good evening Board of Trustees. My name is Julie and I am the Principal Secretary at Justin Garza High School. First and foremost, I would like to make it very clear that I come to you as a Central Unified employee of 20-plus years and current staff member at Justin Garza High School and I come to you on behalf of our head custodian Alex Lopez. We have been informed that Alex is being involuntarily transferred to Central East because their head custodian can't be on their site. Staff and students feel this is unjust and just another setback for Garza. Alex is an extraordinary employee and is phenomenal at his job. He has been an asset to our school and one of the very few original staff members left who have been at Garza since day one. Alex himself was recognized as Rookie of the Year, nominated for Classified Employee of the Year, and most recently awarded by CSEA for the Regional Leadership Award. This only proves how much of an excellent employee he is and taking him away from Garza would be devastating to our community. With the lack of support we already get, Garza has been through numerous staff changes such as two principals, three vice principals, one guidance learning dean and an activities director. However, those members chose to leave due to lack of support and yet Alex, who doesn't want to leave, is being forced out. With all these changes, Alex has been the one constant for our students and the respect and care they have for Alex is mutual. Moving him would not only hurt the staff, but would essentially hurt the students and isn't that why we are all working in a school district, to be here for the students? Because this is being streamed, I think it is very important that the community ask themselves why Alex is being moved so that the other custodian can come here instead. If that custodian can't, not won't, not refuse to, but cannot be on either east or west campus, how is it he is safe to be on Garza's campus with our students? And why would HR think this is the best interest, this would be in the best interest of Justin Garza? Shouldn't involuntary transfers be used for employees with discipline concerns or questionable behavior be the ones to move involuntarily? How is an exemplary employee like Alex being forced to move as if he did something wrong? Alex worked at the district office and everyone there knows him and knows how hardworking he is, so they should be asking themselves why he deserves this. I'm not saying it is, but besides possibly being nepotism, what other possible reason would they go out of their way to make sure this other custodian is placed somewhere all while disrupting Alex's livelihood and pulling him from the site he has worked so hard for? The last time I checked, the definition of human resources was "an organization that focuses on its most valuable asset, its employees." However, in this scenario...
Thank you Julie, that's all the time we have. Our next comment is from Renee. All right, now three minutes left.
However, in this scenario, Alex is the most valuable asset and HR is doing a tremendous injustice to him. The consensus is that Justin Garza High School just keeps getting knocked down over and over and the morale I feel is now at its all-time low and now taking Alex from our site would just be another blow in an already tough year. In closing, I want to be honest by saying that our faith in the district is slowly being diminished because of the lack of support we employees are not getting, so I am pleading that you please help restore that faith and reconsider and overturn the colossal and misguided mistake HR has made and let Justin Garza keep our esteemed, hard-working head custodian Alex Lopez so that Justin Garza High School can thrive once again. Thank you for your time.
Board President Singh, I have no other comments at this time.
President Singh, I do have a call on the line.
Thank you.
We have Brandy M. on the line. Hello Brandy, you have three minutes on the clock, make sure you turn down your listening device so we can hear you loud and clear. Again, you have three minutes on the clock and your time starts now.
What item are we on?
Brandy, we're on unscheduled items. You can comment on any item that is not on the agenda today. There'll be a time later for commenting on specific items on the agenda. Is that clear?
Yes, I'm on a specific item, thank you. And not unscheduled.
Okay, which item do you want to comment on Brandy?
M1, but I can wait until that item.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, thank you both. So then now we turn to our consent agenda. Oh, yeah, sorry, do we have any other comments on any other comments from the public?
We have no further calls.
So now turning to the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Accario, a second by Trustee Curfond. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries, 7-0. We now move on to action item M1, approved law enforcement services contracts, Assistant Superintendent Collegian.
Thank you President Singh, Board of Trustees. This item returns to you from our previous board meeting. Since that time, this last item was presented, the Superintendent's Committee Regarding Law Enforcement Services has met as a team. Additionally, Fresno Police Department has secured an additional SRO to extend services provided to all three middle schools as outlined in the attached proposal. Exhibit A, with the work of the team earlier last week, has updated both attachments in the contracts attached to this item for both the Sheriff's Department and Fresno PD. If you allow for me to just read some of the changes that were made to the exhibit, I would appreciate it. Up to the very top of Exhibit A, what was changed was or included now reads, "The duties include working toward improving the quality of life for students and staff. School sites provide students guidance and on ethical issues, provide individual counseling and mentoring to students." Also added was, "To provide a link between students, school, community and the Fresno Police Department," or in the other case, "the Sheriff's Department. Interact and build relationships with students and staff. Serve as role models to students by modeling positive behavior and professional interactions. Be visible in the halls and common areas of the campus, particularly during times of high student movement, for safety and crime prevention. Respond to reports of on-campus criminal activity using proper discretion to address criminal activity, which includes investigations, documentation and enforcement of the incident based on the totality of the circumstances and the law violated. Also develop SRO activities based on the goals of the school administration and the law enforcement expectations. And lastly, be visible after school during times of high movement to prevent crime surges." We also would like to thank the parties who participated in this process, including our board members and our local law enforcement members who were here with us, from Fresno PD, present tonight Deputy Chief Mindy Castro, Captain Robert Beckwith, Sergeant Anthony Oliverato, from the Sheriff's Department Lieutenant Adam Maldonado, Sergeant Stephen Sopacis, Deputy Joseph Reese and Business Manager Baldo Berber. During our convening, we also learned the importance of increasing the visibility of our SROs, including community outreach events where students, parents and members of our community can learn more about the roles and function of our SROs. And what we also did was summarize the information in the exhibit to an infographic, which I've shared with the board this evening, there's also copies in the back room there, also translated in Spanish and Punjabi, which we'd like to circulate in Central Unified and our websites so our families understand, have a better understanding of the functions, roles and expectations of our school resource officers. Thank you again. Administration is recommending the board approve the attached contracts. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Clerk Curfond, do we have any comments for the public? And I believe we do, the one online as well.
Oh, yeah. Is Brandy still available?
We're waiting for them to push the call through, so it'll just be a second.
Do we have any?
We have also one in person, we'll go there first, that we have Laura Bolton from Kuda.
Hello again. I want to begin by saying that Kuda's role with regard to this contract is to support the needs of the majority of our membership. I will say that we don't have 100% support by our membership, but the majority of the people who have been asking for this support, who have been reaching out, who have been commenting, who have been desperate to get this support, have been in favor of what I'm speaking on today. El Capitan and Rio Vista Middle Schools share an SRO while Glacier Point has a dedicated full-time SRO. This is an equity and safety issue. Staff, including administration at both sites, need the support of a full-time SRO. There are situations that we come across that are out of our jurisdiction, that are unpredictable and put our staff, students and community in harm's way. The relationships built to support most situations and the training provided allow for staff to de-escalate most situations, but not all. There are situations that arrive that put our students at risk, put our staff at risk and there is no training that will prevent every scenario. Putting an SRO on campus decreases the response time, increases the support and provides sites with an extra layer of security. We are aware that having an SRO doesn't stop everything, but it doesn't stop people from making bad decisions, but it doesn't stop people from making bad decisions, but it supports those situations as they do arise. Recently, on a day when the SRO was on the opposite campus, 911 needed to be called. The response time took nearly 18 minutes from the start of the 911 call to the point of contact when officers arrived. Had the SRO been on that campus, response time would have been seconds. Our SRO, and this is the one that they share, is an active participant in our Best Buddies Program and during Special Olympics. They attend our rallies and sometimes participate in activities. Our SRO works with the admin and counseling teams to support conflict resolution. Our SRO is part of our restorative justice practices. Our SRO is on the quad in the morning, during break, lunch and after school. They build strong relationships with students. Our SRO has an office in the front office and is easily accessible for students, families and staff. Our SRO has been a part of the response team on several occasions when students have had medical emergencies. They are medically trained as well. Our SRO is our first responder when we have any incident or emergency, including but not limited to student fights. Next year, our principal, so this is the principal at Rio Vista, and the SRO will be doing formal, regular outreach meetings with small groups of students to support our culture and climate efforts. Thank you. with small groups of students to support our culture and climate efforts. Thank you.
Okay, we have someone on the line. I believe this is Brandy M. Again, Brandy, you have three minutes on the clock. Make sure you turn down your listening device so we can hear you loud and clear. Again, you have three minutes on the clock and your time starts now.
Hello. Is this me? I'm not Brandy. My name is Michelle.
Hi, Michelle.
I'm calling on the... I'm calling to reiterate what Julie said about Alex Lopez. My concern is...
Unfortunately, we've moved past items that were not on the agenda. They can send an email to us or the staff on anything. Thank you.
I did send an email to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
Do we have any other callers online wanting to speak on the SRO contract?
Yes, I believe so. Let me... Hi, is this Brandy? Hi, Brandy, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay, again, you have three minutes on the clock. Make sure you turn down your listening device so we can hear you loud and clear. Again, you have three minutes on the clock and your time starts now.
Wonderful, thank you. I just wanted to call, please do this, to back up some concerns regarding SROs and ask that in reviewing contracts that I can email information, that there are some, to also, there are some concerns regarding school resource officers. We absolutely need our students to be safe, and I feel like that is something that needs to be a priority and looking for. However, in researching over the years, the SROs on campus, there's a number of reports regarding studies that show that there's no evidence that police presence on campus makes schools safer, such as a document by the Department of Justice called Community Oriented Police Services Report, Assigning Police Officers to Students. They recognize there simply isn't a data or objective study yet available that shows that schools are safer. SRO research tends to be descriptive in nature, what they do, and focus on perceptions of people involved. Studies of effectiveness have measured, measuring actual safety outcomes have been mixed and generally tend to be based on perceptions of effectiveness and safety. Basically, there is also item by West Ed, a study that says what we know about the effects of school-based enforcement safety that says, that concludes that there's currently very little rigorous evaluative research on the effects in terms of school safety of having a police presence on school. However, what evidence exists to date, as summarized by the study, fails to support school safety effect. Synthesis do point to an increase in the use of exclusionary disciplinary actions towards students and schools with SROs compared with those that do not, noting that while there is inconclusive evidence of increasing safety, there are some, there has been evidence of detrimental effects on students. And one study that goes through the Department of Education's school-wide data, the data from Stockton Unified and other schools show that there has been, there's been harmful discriminatory policing patterns in schools resulting in being pushed, a number of students, a disproportionate number of students being pushed out of school and into the school-to-prison pipeline. So I ask that, considering this and the great investment in here, to consider potential alternatives and to look into research regarding the effective SROs as well as potentially harmful effects, unintended harmful effects it might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
We do have another call. Give me one second to push them through, please. Okay, we have Isabella Hernandez on the line. Hello, Isabella, you have three minutes on the clock. Make sure you turn down your listening device so we can hear you loud and clear. Again, you have three minutes on the clock and your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Isabella Hernandez. I'm a parent and a Central Unified staff member. I am here to voice my opinion on the importance of adding another SRO and definitely not cutting down the funds that Central Unified has for an SRO. I do recall at the last board meeting, I know certain board members do not feel that an SRO makes a site more safe or makes them feel more safe in particular in general whenever there is an officer present. However, I do feel the opposite. I feel that, I feel very comfortable with my daughter who attends Glacier Point, knowing that there is a resource officer there should any incident occur. I do think it's important, I know, an added benefit is that the school resource officer builds positive relationships with students. And should there be an incident that occurs, it makes the most sense to have someone on-site who can act quickly to support. No one thinks it's important to have an officer on campus until there's a school shooting. Then everyone thinks it's important to have an officer on campus. So I think that it's important for so many reasons. And that's all I have to say.
We have no further calls.
Any other comments, Clerk Kerfond, from the public, audience?
Not at this time.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Correa?
I want to first begin by just thanking both the County of Fresno and the City of Fresno, both of the peace officer organizations for sitting at the table and having the discussion and further explaining what the role and the limitations and the language of the contract. There were revisions, in my opinion, not enough, but I also am well aware of the constraints that are just inherent when dealing with other vendors and particularly with dealing with both the Sheriff's Department and with the City of Fresno's Police Department. So thank you all for coming to the table. I've heard loud and clear both perspectives. The folks or staff and some parents feel safer when we have SROs on campus. In response to our previous discussion, for those that it was not clear, this contract is increasing the number of SROs. We are adding an additional SRO to El Capitan. That means that they would no longer be shared. That also means that this contract's value is over $1.2 million. And in reviewing the contracts and just the discussion, it's clear to me that there's still a lot more that our district needs to do to better inform our community, our teachers, our staff on campus so that they fully understand what the purpose and the role of an SRO and the impact that involving an SRO in any disciplinary matter or any disagreement, any situation, that the adult in this space may feel unsafe and the need for an SRO, the significant impact that that has in our students. I have been, I have not been a proponent of our SROs, and it's not because of who they are. Those individuals on our campus have created great bonds and relationships with our students. My critique is in the overall institution and the lack of oversight in the relationships and the interactions with our students. One of the things that I think was also clear in our discussion is that we as a district need to form policies and procedures so that we as a board, I in particular, better understand what the role and expectations of an SRO are actually on-site. I know that our principals work closely with them, but based on the comments and the feedback, it doesn't appear that perhaps many of our teachers or our families fully understand. I hope that one day I'm able to support the contract for the SROs, both from the Fresno, the City of Fresno Police Department and our Fresno County Sheriff's Department. But as of today, I'm still not confident that that is the best resource. I'd also like to request that moving forward, our district considers other options that address the concerns that our staff, our teachers, our community members have expressed. And if this contract is approved, that in addition to the items in the contract, as far as our Central Unified responsibilities in Exhibit B, that the board receives an annual report of the data that's being collected with respect to the positive interactions, any interactions that result in citations, that provide us an educational session as to how our different sites are using our SRO and how we can better improve that. I'd also like to request, at the discretion of administration and the site principals, that an annual meeting is scheduled, or more frequently as they determine, with our families, both after hours, so that our families who have questions about who is the SRO, what do they do, what are our expectations, those questions can get answered, and that we provide an interpreter in the numerous languages that are spoken or as necessary. We had a couple of Spanish-speaking parents at our last meeting. This contract is not translated, and I don't believe that it has been. And so any other parent or community member who doesn't read English is unable to understand outside of looking for the resources. So I appreciate the info flyer that has been created. That's great. The other thing that I'd like to request as well is that if this contract is approved, that administration consider an additional plan during year two that they present to the board. What are other resources or options that the board has available, if any, in the event that there's a decrease in the availability of SROs in the future? If the cost continues to increase, this is a significant allocation of our funds. We're an educational institution, and we should be focused in providing the additional mental health resources that our students have been asking. So those would be my requests if this contract is approved by the majority of the board. I have no other comments.
Thank you. Trustee Solis?
Well, first of all, I too would like to thank our community law enforcement partners for sitting down with us and discussing the contract. It's deeply appreciated by me. I too am a little skeptical that the contract is a fix-all, is going to resolve any issue that's out there. I believe if you talked to some of the law enforcement officers involved, they would probably tell you and warn you, it's not going to fix everything. That being said, I've received a lot of calls and emails about this, and it's clear to me that the parents want this for different reasons. At the present time, we can't afford it, so I will be voting in favor of this, but with the understanding, I hope you heard my fellow board members' comments about rising costs. And if it comes down between letting go teachers or having school resource officers, I think the majority of the people in the audience can tell where I'm going to be on it. So I'm willing to vote for this simply because of this is what the parents want. There are some good points to it, and I'm not going to say there isn't. So because of that, I will be voting in favor of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, Board Chair. A couple of things I wanted to say that I really appreciate the improvement to the contracts and the level of accountability, safety, mentorship, supporting visibility and outreach. I think that's critical. But I also would like to thank all the parents, in particular, the El Cap parents. It was my understanding that there were more parents that wanted to come and speak up, but because of the nature of some of the things and activities that have been taking place there, they were fearful, and that's not a good sign. So with that being said, and I love their questions in terms of accountability, or what are we getting? We're taxpayers. We're paying for the police force and the Sheriff's Department already, and this is an additional taxation, so to speak. What are we getting for it? So I really appreciate the fact that those parents had the courage to come to the podium and say that. And I want to say that because of those parents, this got pushed to a different level. And I do compliment both the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department for being willing to sit down at the negotiating table and to discuss this and to have a better outcome. So grateful to everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you. And the subcommittee. Trustee Kerfond and Trustee Correa?
Hi. I want to thank our law enforcement officers who are here tonight, as well as those and our board members who met in a committee to improve this contract. It provides more expectations of model behavior, involvement in our community, and also importantly, an additional SRO for our middle schools. This contract, to another board member's point, it's not. This is not a panacea to public safety, but SROs are a crucial component. For the reference to our cost, they are, it is expensive for our Fresno Police officers. They are the highest-paid officers in the valley for good reason. We hold our officers to a high standard of professionalism and because of the important role they provide in our community, of which the Fresno Police officers, Fresno sheriffs, our SROs have been meeting. But it is still, this contract is still less than the Ag Barn we approved last month and only a little bit more than repaving a field at Collegian Stadium. When it comes to our SRO's effective, I want to provide two anecdotes. Last year, when I was taking a tour of El Capitan, immediately upon visiting the site, there was a fight that had broken out and was being resolved. Our officer, I believe Oliverato, was there. And not only was she handling that situation well, but as, you know, we walked the campus together, she was met with positivity and greeting by multiple other students because they know her and they felt safe with her. And then in 2021, there was a school shooting at Collegian Stadium during a football game. Because there was an officer on-site, the suspect was quickly apprehended and a catastrophe was prevented because of that officer that was there in our community on-site. Based on the input from our community members, students, staff, it seems our SROs are actively keeping our students safe and improving the culture of our campuses. Because of the enhanced language of this contract, I feel safer knowing that we're going to have more positive reactions with our SROs in the coming year. With that, I am in favor of this contract.
Trustee Correa?
I had one last comment. I do want to thank Chief Baldurama for finding that additional officer in response to the request by our community. Even if I don't support it, I think it's, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the efforts from the department and the chief. So thank you.
Trustee Sellers?
I can make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Sellers. We have a second by trustee Kerfond. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Those abstaining, motion carries five-two. Thank you. We move on to item number two, approved annual submission of the Carl D. Perkins Career and Vocational Grant. Dr. Bogright?
Thank you. We are requesting approval to receive the Carl D. Perkins Career and Vocational Grant funds from the California Department of Education. This grant provides supplemental funding for equipment and services to enhance our CTE pathways at Central High School, Central East High School, and Justin Garza High School. These funds will be used for work done during the 2024-2025 school year. Next fall, we will begin working on the pathway analysis plan for the following year, 2025-2026. In the next item that I'll bring tonight, I will share more about the work being done to increase and enhance our CTE pathways. Administration is recommending the board to approve submission of the Carl D. Perkins Career and Vocational Grant.
Any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Cervantes?
First and foremost, I think this is great. I just had a question in regards, so the deadline to submit this has already been done. So there's no changing it at this point. But out of the $205,000, $206,000 worth of grant money, it seemed like $127,000 of that was going to go to the Ag program. And my question is, how did we make that? And my question is, how did we make that distinction? And why wasn't that money spread out over the other CT programs throughout the different high schools, which would consist of three?
You know what? It's based on need. It's based on what they need at that school site. I know that Paul Burrell, he's our person that manages this grant fund for us, that he's in regular contact with those school sites and those programs, and I know that there's been significant allocations to the other two high schools in the past.
Can you tell me how many kids participate in that program?
You know, I did not bring that information with me tonight. I can get right back to you with that, though, tomorrow.
Just in comparison to the rest of the CT courses throughout the other high schools, in terms of numbers, I'm just looking at trying to allocate those funds fairly and evenly for everyone. And again, I'm not necessarily questioning why there's 127,000 of these funds going, 75 going to the rest of the CT programs. I just want to make sure that their other CT programs are getting what they need as well.
And this is not the only funding for those programs. We do have other funds as well.
Understood. Yeah, no, no, understood. Yeah. Thank you.
Motion by trustee Solis.
Second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven-zero. We move on to hold our public hearing regarding the 2024 to 2025 Local Control and Accountability Plan, or El Cap. Dr. Boe Right.
Thank you. I do have a presentation to share with you tonight before we hold that public hearing, so I'll go ahead and bring that up. There we go. Okay, so the Local Control Accountability Plan, or El Cap for short, is a three-year plan. This is going to be year one of our three-year plan. The El Cap tells us how we're spending our funds to support positive outcomes that address local and state priorities. These are the components of the El Cap. In addition to the budget overview, you will also find all of the updates from prior years, summary documents, and then goals and actions, which is what we're going to be talking through tonight. You can see that the input process for the El Cap occurred with school site councils, ELAC, and our SLPA. Town hall input meetings started in February. Staff and student feedback sessions were held in March and also in April. New to the El Cap this year are the Equity Multiplier Goals and the schools in which these belong to. These four school sites will receive additional funding this year because they had non-stability rates greater than 25% last year and socio-economically disadvantaged rates greater than 70%. And so those are the schools that will receive those additional funds. The feedback that was received and compiled, it was, I'm sorry, compiled and then analyzed, these are the areas that were prioritized based on that feedback. We want to ensure our public that we are listening and understand that these are the areas that they cared most about during the feedback process. So they're up there. We have academic intervention and support, social-emotional support, English learner support, with a focus on our long-term English learners. These are EL students that have been EL students for six years or more. Our college and career readiness and pathways, parent engagement, and ensuring those safe and equitable environments, and then also research-based professional development opportunities for our staff. So now there are several actions in the El Cap for each goal. So for example, Goal One has 16 actions, but what I'm going to do tonight is just share the actions that were directly related to those items that were prioritized in the feedback that we received. So we'll start at the top there. We have 1.1, so that's from Goal One, Action Two. All students will have access to libraries filled with diverse book collections, access to eBooks and highly qualified teacher librarians. Those teacher librarians teach our students research skills and digital citizenship. They also help curate and collaborate units of studies by providing resources. We also have all students will have access to supplementary materials. Our staff receive ongoing professional development opportunities to continue to build their instructional capacity to teach all of our students. This next slide is also for academic intervention and support. Some of our students attend extended-day program opportunities, such as our after-school programs, summer school, intercession. Based on needs, some schools also have additional instructional aids in the classrooms, and our schools all have access to instructional support coaches. Our teachers and staff receive ongoing professional development to support our students. We have PLC coaching that's still in sight, I'm sorry, still available at all of our sites through Solution Tree that will also continue into the next year. Social, emotional, and behavior support was another area that was prioritized based on the feedback. Our teachers and support staff do receive social, emotional curriculum and training. We have intervention staff on-site. We have our SAFE team. We have counselors to support our students. We also have, all of our students have access to ThinkRays, All for Youth, and then also CYS counselors as needed. The next item that was prioritized based on feedback is supports for our multilingual or our EL students. Our staff do receive professional learning on ELA and ELD frameworks. Our site and our district staff participate in an improvement network with the Fresno County Superintendent of Schools. We have an instructional support coach who's dedicated specifically to the academic needs of our English learner students. We also have professional development being provided on long-term English learner academic needs for our teachers. Our PLCs will add a focus next year for those LTls, and our teachers also have opportunities to collaborate and then develop focused instructional plans. College and career education and graduation improvement was also a prioritize based on the feedback. Our students will continue to be provided with a variety of engaging opportunities and experiences outside of just their regular educational program. We'll also have parenting classes. Oh, you know what? I just realized that we are out of order here. Sorry about that. Here we go. I need to look at those slides. Let's go back to college and career. Our career technical education pathways will be expanded with an enhanced focus on supporting enrollment for our underrepresented student populations. And our family outreach liaisons are actively providing support to parents to increase their involvement in educational workshops, and counseling hours will be provided to assist with dual enrollment planning and registration. Now we're on parent, student, and community engagement. So our students will continue to be provided with access to a variety of engaging opportunities and experiences. We'll also have parenting classes to support attendance. We'll also be offering some one-on-one meetings with parents to find out what they need to help their students improve their attendance. Our safe and equitable learning environment is also very, very important to our educational partners, including our parents. Staffing has been increased to support family engagement. We have culturally responsive training provided to all of our staff. This will continue next year. Also, we have parent workshops that will continue based on the needs and interests of our community. We have collaboration with Fresno County Superintendent of Schools to analyze data and examine potential root causes contributing to our higher suspension rates, and for, just for certain groups. And we also know that systemic changes will occur to improve outcomes for all students. As I shared in a previous slide, there were, I shared with you the areas that were most important to our educational partners based on their feedback. And again, we want to ensure that they understand that we're listening and that we care about those areas that they expressed interest in, but this won't be enough, though, and so I want to tell you about some additional things that we will be doing next year. At mid-year this year, we provided you with an analysis of data and where we were as far as academic progress for our students. We are being very intentional about what will continue next year based on evidence of whether or not our actions are having a positive impact on our students. As the CASP data is starting to come in, we are seeing some of this evidence. So for example, we have a high-needs elementary school site that is showing double-digit growth in both ELA and math. So the work that is being done there is the work that we will be working to scale across the district to our other elementary schools. So next year, we will be relaunching a focus on literacy, specifically with a comprehensive literacy plan. We recognize that significant changes are needed. We'll be piloting early literacy supplemental materials focused on teaching the building blocks of reading. We've identified a gap in our core curriculum in the areas of phonics and phonemic awareness, and so we know that we need some supplemental materials in those classrooms to address those needs that have been identified. District-provided training for administrators and teachers will be provided in areas including full utilization of our core curriculum, guided reading and small-group instruction, and then content literacy strategies for our older students. As mentioned earlier, our letters training will continue. We'll be adding a cohort of teachers next year, and we will also be adding a cohort Our math work will continue and expand next year. Students will be provided with frequent opportunities to tackle rigorous math problems. We've seen success with the P3CC work, and so now we will scale this work even further by launching the third-through-sixth grade coherence collaboration model, or what we will be calling the 3-6 PCC. Cognitively-guided instruction training will be provided for our second-grade teachers. This is the second-year and the two-year model for them. Other teachers will participate in a math ELD workshop series. The On Track Improvement Network will also be scaled to all secondary sites. For our dual enrollment pathways and college-career indicators, many things are planned next year in these areas. We want to increase opportunities for our students and also improve our college-career indicator on the California dashboard. At least 12 dual enrollment units will be made available to every comprehensive high school student before they graduate. Dual enrollment courses will be added to our Alt Ed sites next year. We've also partnered with the West Fresno Center to offer dual enrollment opportunities. Current CTE electives are being transitioned to become A-through-G compliant next year, and all of our academic counselors are receiving training to fully understand all the ways that a student can meet college-career indicator requirements. A new CTE pathway is being added to the central online homeschool. Our area administrator, Kristin Rizberg, she submitted four grant applications to support the increase of pathways and also to offset dual enrollment costs. We currently learn that we will be awarded two of these grants and are awaiting word on the other two. Most of the work to utilize these funds will be part of the 2025-2026 program planning. The next steps include posting the El Cap plan for public comment. The plan is available at both the district office as well as on the website. This item is coming to you tonight for information, and we also request that you hold a public hearing. The El Cap will return once more on June 25th for approval, and then the final version will be submitted to FCS. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
So this is an opportunity for the board to ask any questions as we, and also for the public, for a public hearing before we take action at our next step. Trustee Solis.
Can you tell me whether you have plans or are they already started? How you're going to blend or community school services in with this? I mean, are they going to be part of it? Are we going to do a separate plan? What's the strategy?
Yeah, those are great questions. So we actually have an item coming to you tonight for information on the community schools model, and I think they'll be sharing a little bit about what that collaboration is going to look like, but absolutely, our community schools will be involved in the support of this work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'd like to say to all the staff here, the board made it clear a while back that we were only hearing about grants coming through once in a while, and now all of a sudden, it seems like we're hearing about this more and more. So I'm assuming the staff has been focusing in securing some of these grants, and I've noticed it, and just like to say to all the staff, good work, we appreciate it. Every time you get one of these grants, that's more services we can provide to the kids of this district. Thank you.
Trustee Sellers.
Thank you, Dr. Boe Right. Can you give a little bit more information on what CTE pathways will be expanded?
So currently, we have the CTE pathway at the online school that will be added next year, and then the remaining pathways that we're looking at, that's going to be part of the planning for 2025-2026, as we start to plan out with our new boundaries and our three comprehensive high schools.
Okay. So the CT that's being expanded is for homeschool?
The online homeschool, online homeschool.
Can I get a little bit more information on what that program will entail and how those kids will utilize that?
Sure. I'm going to invite area administrator Kristin Rizberg up. She's been instrumental in that planning.
Thank you.
Okay, so for central online homeschool, they're going to do a child and family services pathway, where they start with kind of a hybrid program. So what they're going to do is they're going to do, and I don't know the courses right off the top of my head, but I know the first course is a matched course to Central East High School for their opening of their CTE pathway, which I believe is family, I don't want to get the name wrong. And then the second half would be like the early elementary childhood development pathway, where they plan to do a hybrid, bring kids in and do hands-on projects and kind of give them a pathway to get their licensing in CPR and other skills that they would need to go into early childhood education. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I know this isn't included in this. Can we get a list of all the CTE programs that the district currently offers?
Yeah, we have that, and I don't have it with me tonight, but I can put it into the Friday Report.
Okay, thank you. My last question is, which dual enrollment classes will be added or offered at all sites now?
Can I put that in the Friday Report as well?
Yes.
Okay, I will bring that to you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Davis?
If I can also add, that's one of the significant items that we've committed to working on this fall to make sure all of our families know prior to the start of registration process this fall, so that everyone knows what dual enrollment offerings are, what those funds that are being acquired through grants can allow us to expand to. So that's a reference of some of that work. I can give you the current, and I think we've got a commitment to come back to you in the fall with what it'll look like as we open '25-'26.
If no other questions, then we'll go ahead and close the hearing, and we will have it come back to the next meeting. Thank you. We next turn to item number four, hold public hearing for the adoption of the 2024-2025 proposed budget. Assistant Superintendent Iqbal.
Good evening. Before I start the budget presentation, I want to briefly go over the formal budget cycle. It starts with the annual budget, which is approved before July 1st. The next is the budget document in the first interim. Next one is the second interim. Finally, the fiscal year ends with the unaudited actual. In addition to the budget report, the In addition to the budget report, the district has to inform the county office and CDE, California Department of Education, what certification is the board approving. So, for the annual budget, the district will be reporting a positive certification. This slide is a quick summary of the annual budget data points before we look at the financials. So, we have the district submitting a positive certification. The district enrollment project to be at 15,000, 955. The average daily attendance is at 92%, and then unduplicated pupil percent is at 81.77%. This slide kind of gives a highlight of the state budget during the main revise. So, we have the COLA increased slightly from .76 to 1.07. No budget cuts for education program, but it might change throughout the year. No deferral has been announced. SFR funds end in September 30th, 2024. This is the summary of the unrestricted general fund for fiscal year 24-25. The estimated revenue we'll be receiving is 234.8 million. Estimated expenditure is 215.2 million, contribution at 27.6 million. So, as you can see, the revenue is at 234.8 million, and the expense is at 242, which means the expense is 7 million more than the revenue. So, if you look at the beginning balance in July 1, 2024, it's at 34.9 million. So, when the 7 million is taken off, the ending balance is at 27.2 million. So, the ending balance is divided into three parts. The first part is we will commit at 6 million for the facility projects. The second part is known as the reserve for economic uncertainty. It is, it's used for payroll safety net. However, it's gonna be also included for planning of new school, Shields and Brawley, facility planning for Central High School and Central East High School, and to address loan for the VAPA building. That's the 7.4. And then the state reserve, or state and board required reserve 5% is 10.7 million. So, that's the 27.2 million. This slide is the distribution of the unrestricted expenditure. So, you have certificate salary at 95.6 million, classified salary at 35.1 million, employee benefits at 50.1 million, books and supply at 7.2 million, services and other operating expenditure 17.3 million, capital outlay at 7.7, other outgo at 5.5, and then transferring indirect cost is 3.5. So, total expenditure is 215 million. Out of that, 85% is salary and benefits. This slide shows the distribution of the restricted fund expenditure. Certificate salary is 20 million, 20.1 million. Classified salary is 10.1 million. Employee benefits is 20.1 million. Books and supplies 18.5 million. Services and other expenditure 16 million. Capital outlay at 5 million. Other outgo at 700,000, and then indirect cost is 3.4. So, the total expense is 94 million. Since we are stating a positive certification, it is important to look at the multi-projection. Before we analyze the budget number, let's look at some of the assumption. So, for the next couple of years, we are projecting a flat enrollment. We wanna be careful not to over-project our revenue. So, flat enrollment is less than 1%. So, we are increasing the enrollment by 100 student in the upcoming years. Multi includes the cost of living adjustment. So, in fiscal year 25-26 is 2.93, and then for fiscal year 26-27 is 3.08. There's gonna be slight increase in SCFF funding. Then the STIRS, PERS, and health and welfare costs is going up. PERS is gradually increasing from 27.05 to 28%, and then STIRS will remain same at 19.1. And then the last is we have to be careful that we are paying a COP of 2.8 million every year. This slide, this slide shows the multi-projection. For fiscal year 24-25, we have a revenue for 234 million, expenditure at 215 million, contribution 27 million, and then the ending balance of 27 million. Again, in fiscal year 25-26, the estimated revenue is 241 million, expenditure is 219 million, and then contribution is 25 million. Again, the ending balance is going down from 27 to 23. That means we are, our expense is 3 million more than our revenue. Finally, on fiscal year 26-27, we have a revenue of 248 million, and then expenditure is 223 million and a contribution at 23 million. So, there you can see that our balance has gone up by 2 million to 26.3 million. Some of the key highlights of the budget report is a central, again, school district is able to meet all these, our financial obligation, we support one-time federal funds. A district will monitor the enrollment idea. We wanna make sure that we are careful with our revenues, and then special education, transportation costs are continuously increasing, so we wanna keep track of those costs. So, with that, thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Solis.
Interesting power point. When you're saying that we're meeting all our costs, is that including all the proposed construction?
This is for the general fund, not the construction cost, no. We have to, like I said in the one of the slide, that we have to take a loan to pay the VAPA building.
And your assumption is that you're gonna receive all your state money that we were approved on time?
Yes, that's assumptions. So, that's why we are, even with the revenue, I've kept it flat, so that way, you know, the revenue might go up, but hopefully doesn't go down.
All right. I don't wanna spend a lot of time echoing past statements, but I'm concerned about the cost of the construction, and I know the community is because they're calling me about it, so I'm assuming they're calling you guys about it, the rest of the board. They're tying in the bond to past decisions of the board that they have made, so that's gonna be an issue down the road. We're gonna have to have a discussion about whether we're gonna proceed forward or not proceed forward at the whim of the majority of the board. So, I mean, there's consequences there. We'll have that discussion when it comes, I guess. Thank you very much.
Trustee Kerfond.
Thank you, Board President Singh. Thank you for your presentation, Assistant Superintendent Iqbal. Minor question on the multi-year projection slide. It says that we're projecting a flat ADA in the upcoming school year?
Flat means less than 1%. So, if our enrollment is 19,000, we are gonna increase the enrollment by 100.
And our average daily attendance, the...
The enrollment, and the average is assuming to be at 92%.
Okay. I was under the impression that we're working toward improving our ADA, but I'm gonna take this as we're going to project it to be flat so that we can be wrong and excited when we get a little bit extra money from the state next year.
If that's this.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Servantes.
Thank you, Board Chair. So, if I remember correctly, last year, we had about 82% for salary and benefits. So, we increased by 3%.
Well, two things happened. One, if you look at it, all the SFR funds is going away, so that has an impact, and then, you know, the raise has an impact.
And we've also added additional staff.
Yes.
With the aspirations that will increase our academic achievement. So, I'm hopeful. But with that, I forgot, there was something else I was gonna say. Oh, in here, where's the deferred maintenance, and how much is...
It's not here. It's about 2 million.
About 2 million?
Yes.
Is that enough?
Well, that's all we have right now, because as you can see...
You couldn't afford to do more?
Yes.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
No calls.
Then with that, we'll go ahead and close public hearing, and the board will take action at the next meeting. Thank you. No motion on this item. It's a public hearing. We continue on to item number five, adopt resolution 2324-50, education protection account for 2024-2025. Assistant Superintendent Iqbal.
So, the administration is recommending that board adopt resolution 2324-50, education protection account for 2024-25. The EPA fund will be allocated to all non-administrative certificated salaries benefited expenditure.
Questions or comments on this item? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by trustee Solis, a second by trustee Servantes. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0. We turn to accept gifts to the district. Assistant Superintendent Iqbal.
Attached other gifts to the district. Administration is recommending the board accept the gifts. As a follow-up, thank you letters will be sent to the donors.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Servantes?
I want to thank Board Member Maling for back-to-back years of considerable donations. Collectively, that's $15,000 between two years, and that's exceptional on behalf of the community. Very grateful. That's a lot of money to donate. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Solis. We have a second by trustee Kerfond. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Abstaining, sorry. Motion carries 6-0-1. We move to item number seven, approve consolidated application for categorical funding. Dr. Boerwijk.
Thank you. This funding application must be board-approved and then certified by the California Department of Education to receive categorical funding. Administration is recommending the board approve the 2024-2025 consolidated application for funding, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from the board?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Corio, a second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 6-0 with trustee Servantes not present. Thank you. We move on to item number eight, approve core and supplemental materials for elementary and secondary classes. Dr. Boerwijk.
Thank you. School staff have reviewed and requested these items for use beginning with the next school year. There are four novels requested by our secondary school sites, and then the requested extension of contracts for math and science are needed since state adoptions for new curriculum have been significantly delayed. We're looking at math adoption in 2025-26, if the state approves kindergarten through eighth-grade materials, and then science is not until the year 2030-2031. Approval is requested for the listed textbook and instructional materials, and administration is recommending this item be placed in the June 25th board agenda for action.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Corio.
I just wanna make clear that the need for the extension is not a result of Century Unified's actions, but the state in approving the material. I know you said that, but I just wanna make that very clear, so there's not any misunderstandings by our community.
Right, yeah, our contracts are expiring, and so we do have to have the extensions to continue.
Thank you.
Trustee Kerfond.
Regarding the novels up for approval, is Homer's The Odyssey not already in our curriculum?
It is, but this is a version, I have it here if you'd like to see it. It actually is what they're calling a graphic version, so it really, I don't wanna say simplifies, but makes the novel more accessible for many of our students.
All right, great, thank you.
And we're, and just to clarify, Dr. Boerwijk, we are, we are seeking a motion to approve at this board meeting, or sorry, at the next one?
This one.
This one.
Oh, this one.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's, that is correct. Yes, it was, it wasn't information, and we moved it to action. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I thought I heard something different. I thought I knew something different.
Sorry about that.
I move to approve the core and supplemental materials for the elementary and secondary courses as presented.
We have a motion by trustee Corio. I heard trustee Sellers first. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 6-0 with trustee Servantes absent. Thank you. Item number nine, approve online benefit enrollment program. Assistant Superintendent Iqbal.
All right. Administration is recommending the board approve the online benefit enrollment platform, Benefit Solver. It takes, it's a program that does all our online benefit enrollment, plus it takes care of ACA compliant, which is the Affordable Care Act, and then it has the COBRA component. When employees are separated from the district, they have the opportunity to use the COBRA. So...
Comments from the board? Assistant Superintendent Iqbal, can you just share with the, with the community a little bit about how the process was to adopt this particular program?
Well, we sent out an RFP with certain requirements, and these are the two companies that responded, Benefit Solver and the other, I don't have the list, the other one. So, once we had the response, we went through what we needed in the RFP, and based on that, Benefit Solver was a better pick based on cost and what the service provides.
Did we have anyone from the district make sure, like in terms of usability was... I mean, of course, the RFP is important in terms of making sure that they have the minimum required, so did we, did we also check user-friendliness, userability about it?
Usually, what we have is our benefit committee, and then we have our benefit specialist lady, Mrs. Lady, and she kind of keeps track of what's happening. If there's any issue, then we can kind of respond based on that.
And the committee had some time to play around with it?
Yes, yes. We have been using this for the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by trustee Solis. We have a second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 6-0 with trustee Servantes absent. We move on to item number 10, hold public hearing and adopt resolution 2324-48 regarding dedication of easements to City of Fresno, AT&amp;T, and PG for development of Shields and Brawley Elementary School, APN 511, 322-22 portions. Director Rodriguez.
Thank you, Board President and Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis. Tonight, this item returns to you for your consideration and adoption of board resolution 2223-48 and the request to hold a public hearing on this item for the Shields and Brawley Elementary School project. This item contains public easements that are necessary to be either dedicated or granted pursuant to ED Code 17556. The easements are necessary in order to open the school. These easements allow the public utility companies to continue services without interruption and are required by local ordinance such as the City of Fresno Utilities. The city will not approve any connection to stormwater, water, or sewer despite any associated fees being paid without the street easement. At this time, administration requests that the Board of Trustees... At this time, administration requests that the Board of Trustees open this forum to hold a, hold the public hearing on the question of making the conveyance of the easements to the entities. And after the hearing, consider the adopt, consider and adopt the resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, four, dash forty-eight to approve the easements. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from the board? Then we'll go ahead and close pub, public hearing. Unless you have any comments from the public?
No calls.
Do I have a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Mailing, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries six, zero with trustee Cervantes absent. We move on to item number eleven, approve bid awards for Justin Garza High School Athletic Complex and number two project, Director Rodriguez.
Thank you again, Board President and Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis. This item returns to you tonight because there was a request by the board for supplementary, supplementary information to accompany the bid award recommendations on the work that the prime contractors often will perform. Both are included on the attachment, the supporting new document is titled, Prime Contractors Bid Summary Tabulation. So administration is recommending that the Board of Trustees approve the award of the bid packages to the lowest apparent prime bidders for, for this project.
Questions or comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Solis, a second by trustee Sellers, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries six, zero with trustee Cervantes absent. We move on to our information items, thank you, Director Rodriguez. The first information item is to receive information regarding California Community Schools Partnership Program, CCSPP. With Director, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Lopez and Erin English.
Good evening, Board Trustees and Board President Singh, as well as superintendent Kitty Davis. I am excited to be here today to present an informational item on our Community Schools Program. We did receive a little over eight point three million dollars in funding from the State Board. Thanks to your support as well as the great work that our team has entailed in. So, we are here to present a little bit about the work that we are going to engage in in the upcoming years. We do have a presentation and Director Erin English will be supporting with the presentation. Good evening, Board President Singh Chan, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis. I'm so excited to be here to present our information about the implementation grant that was, we received for our six sites for the Community Schools Program. So before I talk about the process, I want to just give a brief overview about the Community Schools. So the Community Schools Movement is something that has been around for a while. But recently, our state has dedicated significant amount of funds to support bringing Community Schools to local school districts to really have, support the whole child. And we know that students learn best when all of their needs are met. And so there are four pillars in the Community Schools, as you'll see on the right-hand side of the slides. These include family and community engagement, the collaborative leadership processes, the extended learning time opportunities, as well as the integrated student supports. And so looking at that, that became our mission to see how we met the needs of our students and what gaps were missing. And we used the information from students, families, community partners, as well as school staff. To really delve in and find out what we could do to best support our students along with these pillars. The Community Schools Framework is, this is a summary of this. There is a narrative that you can find on the CDE website, however, this really encapsulates what the Community Schools Framework is. If you look at the four portions, you can see quadrants of four. And if we take any piece out of those quadrants, it's not a Community School. So we can't just do anything partially, this has to be an all-end effort. And so really, we have partnerships with our education partners, with our family students. We have the four proven practices, the conditions for learning, and the cornerstone commitments. And you see that circle in the middle and that means that it should be a reflective process, it's a collaborative process, it's not a top-down process. Because each school knows what's best for their students. And if we really want to partner with the families and bring them in, then we will see those academic gains and achievements to really support our students in this process. So we were really excited to really take, embark on this. And really, it behooves us to make sure that we are looking at all four of these pieces of the framework and make sure that we are implementing these processes throughout this grant. And so that's what we wrote to, the grants are available. And so each school site has a grant that's written that encompasses all of these four areas of the framework. It's exciting to know that this work started with Teague Elementary School. And so, as you remember, we started with a planning grant for Teague to really get us on the path of Community Schools. And so this planning grant was for two years, from years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four. With the goal of implementing the Community Schools and submitting an implementation grant. If we recall on the previous slides, one of the most important components of the Community Schools is having each site have a Community Schools Coordinator. So I just wanted to say that part of our planning grant was to hire coordinator. And so for Teague, we do have Ms. Judy Martinez. And so, in the research that shows is that this coordinator is vital, so each of the school sites will have their own coordinator. Because they will be there on campus to really support the flow of Community Schools and make sure that everything is adhered to in the processes. And really being that network person between the families, the community services, as well as the education leaders on site. The state determined allocation based on the enrollment population of the school sites. And so, most of our school sites fell into the medium category, except we have one small school. And so those numbers are represented in this table showing that over a five-year period, what our school sites will be receiving. And that will be to support the four pillars of the community work. Each year, the schools must review that as well as set goals, and Dr. Lopez will expand more upon that. So as described, this was a grant and there needed to be an implementation grant that was submitted for the sites. So thank you for all the work. We do have our leaders here today, so thank you so much for coming tonight and for all the work that you put into this. So having said that, the following six school sites will be allocated the funding per the State Board approval. And that is Biola, Madison, Tilly, Roosevelt, Steinbeck, and Teague Elementary Schools. Director English has already met with each one of the leaders at each of the sites to explain and discuss the plans. As explained, there is components to the grants that we have to adhere to. And that is each site requires to adhere to the following nine priorities. Shared understanding and commitments, collective priorities, setting goals and taking action. And that comes into play in the needs assessments done at each of the school sites. Collaborative leadership, coherence, policy and initiative alignment, staffing and sustainability, strategic community partnerships, professional learning, centered, community-based pedagogy, and progress monitoring. I know Director English already discussed a little bit about the importance of including the community and the partnerships that we have around us. Each community is different, diverse. So in order to ensure that we create the plans that meet the needs of the specific school and its community. Partners such as teachers, classified staff, we have administrations, students, as you see here on the visual, they provide their input. We also engage community partners and community members in this process. They identify the needs at the site because every single one of us has a different lens, right? So those lenses are very important and they come into play in, in the creation of the goals that are created at each of the sites. So I am going to answer a little bit of the question that you brought up, trustee Cervantes. So one of the pillars is the part that speaks to the expanded learning and enrichment opportunities, which plays into CTE. So now, the only piece that we need to take into account is if the community feels like that is something they want to invest with, in those, with those funds. Then yes, there would be definitely a collaboration, but through the expanded learning programs, then we also do that as well, right? I know I was at Teague Elementary and they mentioned a night, a steam night, right? So that would be something that they could put into their plan. The model that we follow is a five-year investment model and it's grounded on sustainability. So we don't want something to be in existence for five years and then be gone, right? So the idea is that we invest in these positions now. We create the partnerships with the community and the programs around our neighborhoods. And those programs and those relationships are maintained after the five years. Now we have programs and community partners that continue investing into our schools because now we have those relationships with those community partners. So that is the, the, the big idea behind the five-year investment model and that is why the coordinators are needed, to make those connections between the school and the community. All of this is grounded in SMART goals that are created at each of the sites. We do want to see a return on investment, so we have accountability measures. And one of them is around the number of services provided at the site, so partnerships created. We would like to see a five percent per year increase in those services or connections built between partnerships for the sites and for students and families. We would also like to see an increase of parent engagement by ten percent with a focus on historically marginalized populations. And that is data that we're going to be collecting. But besides these two, so these are applicable to all the sites. Each site has their own SMART goal, right? Because they created a needs assessment, they identified the need, now they have to create a SMART goal around that as well. So that'll be additional data that is collected to see what is the impact of the funding. I do want to share about the, because I know there's questions that have came up about the funding. The funding, the funding was allocated by the State Board of Education and it is in front of you now. Now, all staffing costs will come out of those allocations for each site because they are funding their coordinators and other positions, okay? Additional funding will remain at the site and that is the investment that is going to be placed on any items that they wish to see to meet the needs assessment. Thank you for your time and we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Sellers and then trustee Kerfond?
Thank you for the presentation. It's very exciting times and to get this money opportunity. With that, are there any requirements for the long-term after five years that if we accept the grant that we are responsible for keeping?
Can you guys hear me? There isn't, but the idea is that before that happens, we would like to look at additional funding that we can apply for, so that's the goal. But know that there is some community partners out there that don't require funding, right? So it is being able to make, make that connection between PG&E, Centro de la Familia, easy access for some of our coordinators. To start creating those relationships to our sites that can maintain and stay for years to come, so yeah.
Thank you. My next question on the, one of the slides, we said the district is required to match one-third, thirty-three percent. Is that annually, is that over the entire five-year commitment?
I believe that was part of the grant, the grant that was written.
Thank you. So I, I believe that when we were talking about matching, it can also refer to the work that different personnel from the site do. As far as the grant goes, administration and, and different personnel on the site that work on this grant. So, matching doesn't always mean funds, it can also mean the salaries of the individuals working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Kerfond?
Thank you, Board President Singh. This is a great presentation, thank you both for this. I know you've been working hard on our Community School Grant. Do we plan on funding these Community Schools expansions beyond this grant? Or is this the, our only lever for funding?
The idea is that we continue to look at funding. So I know one position was the supervisor of our Community Schools. So we are looking at continuing to ensure that we look for funding and apply for grants. But at the end of the day, once again, this funding is to kick us off and be able to create those partnerships with the community programs out there, that are out there that can support and continue the funding.
Okay, great. And I just want to reiterate that I'm, I'm very committed to supporting Community Schools. This program, model of education is proving to be really beneficial for our students. And as someone who represents half the schools on this list in my district. I know that these communities really need it, they have high unduplicated counts, you know, we have students who have, don't have a lot of resources. You mentioned a few great organizations as well, Centro de la Familia and others. Have you considered partnering with health clinics or doctor offices? Since that's one of the deficiencies in our community of Westland ninety-nine?
We, we have a lot of ideas, like one of them is for sure creating a list of all those organizations in our, in the Central Valley that we can provide to each of the Community Schools. So we're working on that planning now.
Okay, thank you so much. And we look forward to supporting this program in the future.
Trustee Solis and then trustee Correa?
Can you explain how you're going to measure your, your success? What, what points are you going to be looking at?
So I know one of them is around parent engagement. So we are looking at the list of parents that were engaged in Title I meetings, but also community meetings that they held at the sites. We are going to collect a baseline because we need a baseline to be able to measure growth. And every year, we are going to be collecting that data from the school sites around the parents that attended those events. But we were even discussing with one of the schools, I'm going to bring back Teague again, right? We discussed, well, could there some be projects that we send home? And that we provide the materials and say, hey, this is a great way to engage in an activity at home, right? And have engagement that way because engagement can look very different for many parents. Look at me, I'm working at ten o'clock at night, but when I get home this weekend, I will love to work on a project with my child, right? So being able to provide opportunities outside of the school as well to engage our parents and, and our kiddos. If I could also add that every year that is required by the state, there will be an annual progress report. And in fact, I've been working on those for Teague Elementary for the planning grant as well in collaboration with the school principal and the site team there. And so there are some measurable requirements that the state does ask for, especially in the whole child inventory. There's a list that goes through different aspects of that whole student to really key into that holistic learning. Whether it's pedagogy or expanded learning opportunities or discipline occurrences. And so that's something that is required and that we will be obviously committed to following to measure our progress throughout this implementation grant series. But I will mention, remember, each site is creating their own SMART goal, correct? So that SMART goal can be different for Roosevelt compared to Teague. Perhaps their goal is to decrease suspensions, right? So then the data around that will also be measured. Besides the two other points, which is parent engagement, as well as an increase in supports to families through the, the partnerships that are being built.
Trustee Correa?
Thank you. One of the questions I have is, it's, I think, imperative that we have community involvement and feedback. And that's clear in the presentation, that all the discussions around Community Schools. Other than the existing committees and opportunities that we offer to our parents, how else are we going to engage to ensure that we are getting that feedback? And that we are getting confirming information about the additional resources needed by the community at our designated Community Schools?
We are currently working with other partners besides just the committees at the sites to ensure that we have sites to ensure that we have a bigger picture as well as a district on where we're headed with this program.
Thank you.
No other questions, we thank you for the presentation. Thank you. We move on to information item number two, receive information regarding revised board policy 4157, 4257, 4357, and 6175. Assistant Superintendent Colleton and Dr. Ben.
Thank you, thank you, President Singh, appreciate it. This item will be covered by both myself and Dr. Boatwright. We have two board policies for your review this evening. And board policies are brought to the Board of Trustees for review and revision and as adoption is necessary. There is also some updates here on board policy, specifically employee safety, 4157, reference which requires starting July 1st of 2024, districts need to establish, implement, and maintain at all times and in all work areas, a workplace violence prevention plan with specified components. And this is Senate Bill 553, which was added in section 6401.9 to the Labor Code, essentially that a workplace violence prevention plan must be written with extensive component requirements, which includes record keeping, active involvement of employees and representatives, just to name a few items, but also includes definitions, understanding of some of the workplace violence prevention plan components, emergency response procedures, hazard identification and evaluation, just to name a few. And this is actually separate than the Safe School Plans or the IILC. So updates have, have been made to the board policy. Staff is currently working on finalizing the Workplace Violence Prevention Plan and also collaborating with our, our employee groups and getting, seeking input there before trainings begin. Thank you.
And I have BP 6175 for migrant education. Just a single revision on this one. So the revisions are to include updating the reference to this group of highly mobile, mobile students as students who are migratory, which aligns with ED Code and CDE's federal program monitoring system. And then administration is recommending that the board approve these revised board policies.
Yeah, thank you. Receive information regarding 2024, 2025 district Title I parent engagement policy. Dr. Boatwright.
In accordance with BP 6020, we must have a Title I parent engagement policy that is annually reviewed with parent advisory committees. This year, specific activities to increase parent engagement were included, as well as enhancements to increase readability, readability and add information about the Parent Square Communication Platform. Annual review of this policy is necessary for us to receive Title I funding. Administration is recommending that this item be placed on the June 25th board agenda for action.
Trustee Kriya.
I think I ask this every year, but do we translate this document into our major? Okay, I see a lot of heads nodding confirming, yes, we do.
All the heads behind me, yes.
And then is there an opportunity for our community to provide additional feedback once that's been translated if they disagree or they think something else is missing or they remember something else that should be added to our policy?
I have director Annette Chamberlain here and.
So to summarize, my question is what opportunities, if any, exist for parents to provide any feedback after the translation of the policy?
On the quality of the translation or on what the document itself says?
What the policy itself says.
So the policy is governed by federal guidance, so that's, once it's approved by all the committees, it stands for the next school year. But every time we have it on the agenda beginning in the fall and we encourage that two-way communication between the district level and the site where our reps take it back to school sites, it's an ongoing conversation. So if they see something when the final version is posted in July, they, that they already know they want to update or change for the next school year, I've, I've already seen things I want to change for next year. So it, it just kind of goes into the hopper and that's part of the ongoing editing and updating process that we conduct.
Okay, so I guess procedurally, if our community identifies as you have some of, some areas or some things they'd want changed, who would they be communicating directly with?
They would email our office and we would keep a, a, a kind of an ongoing roster of the suggested edits and then we would take it back to our committees when the time was right, after it'd been published on an agenda 72 hours in advance.
Understood, thank you so much.
If, if no other question, we'll have this returned under action, just, just to give all the board members more time to review. We turn to item number four, receive information regarding 2024, 2025 student wellness and support service contracts. Dr. Boatwright.
Thank you. So we have contracts tonight that are being submitted to support wellness for our students and our families. There are four contracts there. We have AMERGES, which is through Maxim Healthcare Staffing Services. They do provide additional support in the area of applied behavioral analysis therapy. We have Metamorphosis Therapy Group, which they provide IEP-identified speech services as additional coverage when needed for Central Unified. We have the TALK Team. They also provide those additional services if needed in Central Unified. And then we have Speech Therapy Link, which provides IEP-identified occupational therapy services to our Central Unified students. Administration is recommending that this item be placed on the June 25th board agenda for action. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have and I also have our special education director Julie Schaefer here as well.
Questions, comments from the board? Trustee Sellers.
Thank you. Reading through this here, it says these contracts are for specialists who are out on leave during the, the school year. Is that, how many, how many times have we utilized these services?
I can bring that back to you. We don't have specific numbers here with us tonight, but I can certainly share that with you. But you know, we do have a number of staff that, you know, go out on maternity leave, have to be out for long-term illnesses. And if we don't have the staff within to cover those additional students and school sites, then we do ask to bring in those outside services on a temporary basis.
Is there a, a limit of days per year that these contracts will cover?
No, there is not.
Theoretically, we could have them for the 180 days a year that our students are there?
Well, it would be for the school year.
Okay. My next question is how, how do we ensure their, the students are actually getting the services that they're required to, to receive?
Good evening. So we did have three of our speech language pathologists that were out this year, like Dr. Boatwright said, due to various reasons, maternity leave, illnesses, extended leaves that we don't have any control over because life happens. And so all of our students that have these services, they are required to have an individualized education plan. And so their minutes are dictated based off the assessment that showed that they had a need. And so those are tracked, our services are tracked through, say, Service Tracker or through Paradigm. Our, our own employees will, will do it through Paradigm and say, Service Tracker. And then some of our substitutes, they'll also keep their logs too because we're paying them.
So I just want to confirm that we are keeping track ourselves, we're not relying on another party to say, yes, we've, we've fulfilled our obligations.
Yeah, correct. We're all responsible when that annual IEP or the triennial comes up for us to be able to say that we've provided those services and that we've met goals or made progress or if not, you know, we're making changes to those things.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Cervantes.
Thank you, board chair. I just had a quick question in regards, and forgive me if I get the acronyms incorrect. I was just making sure that these services are for the mild and moderate and then moderate and severe, so the, the complete gamut of needs that some of these students may have based on their personal needs.
Yes, our service providers do anywhere from mild all the way through. So we have RSP, so that would be some limited support. And then we have our special day class students and our functional life skills students. And so our speech language pathologist and our OT service, the whole range.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Trustee Kriya.
Dr. Boatwright, maybe this goes back to trustee Sellers's question. When we're talking about the financial impact that's listed on the agenda item, one point of clarification, we don't get charged under these contracts unless we use them, right? They're on an hourly rate, I think is what I saw in the contract.
That is correct.
Can you very briefly talk about the financial impact then that's listed on the agenda item? Is this what's been expanded thus far in the past or we anticipate will occur?
I don't believe there, there is an expansion here. We can certainly share the amounts that we've paid for, for example, this year for these additional vendors. We can bring that information to you.
So the amount listed is currently what the contract provides, right? It's under, on the, on the agenda item, it says financial impact, emerges maximum healthcare 300,000 sped. Or is that where it's being allocated from? I guess, can you just explain what that information means?
Yes, so that's up to the amount that we would spend and then the budget is there. So for example, the special education has a specific budget that's utilized to pay this vendor or these vendors.
Okay, thank you.
If no further question, we'll have this returned as actions just so that we can provide the additional information so that we could compare both what is allocated and, and also what was spent in previous years. We move on to item number five, receive information regarding 2023, 2024 program self-evaluation for California State Preschool Program. Dr. Boatwright.
Okay, one, one last time. The preschool program self-evaluation provides a tool to monitor the effectiveness of our preschool programs and identify areas for improvement. Based on the findings from the self-evaluation, program goals will focus on concepts of print, phonological awareness, number sense for math, and then also the inquiry process. And this item is coming to you tonight just for information.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the board? Thank you for the information. Item number six, receive information on the Expanded Learning Opportunity Programs, ELOP or ELOP sometimes pronounced, area administrator Garrett.
That's me, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Hello again. This informational item is to discuss the 2425 agreement with Fresno County Superintendent of Schools to help fund our staffing needs for the extended learning programs. This staffing is currently provided by Fresno County Superintendent of Schools. And as a reminder, Fresno County currently hires that staffing during the summer. Our principals oversee the programs over the academic year. I am beginning to look at what our transition will look like in the upcoming years relating to the after-school programs. So I just wanted you to have that background information. And we are recommending that this item be placed on the June 25th agenda for action.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Kriya.
I just want to confirm, for ELOP programs, there is specific funding from the state and that establishes eligibility requirements for priority service to certain students. In your review of the programs, will you also make sure that you review any need for allocation from the general funds or from any other grants that may be available to ensure that we have the necessary funding to meet the needs of our entire district?
Yes, so we did take a look at that, thanks to Jeff. Thank you for your support with this process. So the ACES and 21st Century Grants are covering baseline positions and staffing. But as part of the ELOP, we are using those fun, that funding according to the ELOP guidelines to ensure that our kiddos' needs are met. So for example, kindergartners now are able to enroll at higher rates. We have a 10 to one ratio compared to the larger ratios in the older grades. So we are ensuring that staffing is provided to accommodate for those numbers coming in next year.
Thank you.
Then we'll, we'll have this item returned for, on consent if there's no other. Item number seven, receive information and hold a public hearing regarding contract openers for labor negotiations between California, sorry, between Central Unified School District CUSD and Central Unified Teachers Association, CUTA, chapter 961. Assistant Superintendent Colleton.
Thank you, President Singh, Board of Trustees. As required by Government Code, section 3547, a public hearing must be held prior to adopting initial proposals for contract negotiations. Both proposals for, are attached to this item for your review. Administration is recommending that the board hold a public hearing and, and adopt contract openers for labor negotiations between CUTA and CUSD at the next board meeting, June 25th, 2024. Thank you.
Questions or comments about the hearing? Then, then this item will return for a public hearing and then, and as part of our action agenda on the next, on the next, at the next meeting. Number eight, thank you. Number eight, number, receive information regarding annual authorization to purchase via piggybackable cooperative purchasing contracts. Assistant Superintendent McCall.
This will help the district to use piggyback contracts when needed from other school district. Administration is recommending this item be placed on June 25th board agenda for action.
No questions or comments, we'll have this returned for consent. Item number nine, receive information regarding bleacher seating shop inspection services for Justin Garza High School Athletic Fields Project in increment number two. Director Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Singh and Board Trustees and Superintendent Davis. For your information tonight, it's a proposal for bleacher seating inspection services to be conducted at the Southern Bleacher Company Plant in Graham, Texas. The proposal is from Precision Inspection Services that many, some school districts use to perform the implant inspections at the Southern Bleachers plant. The bleachers are district furnished, contractor installed, and are included in the increment two portion of the project for installation. The shop inspections are required by the Division of the State Architect. The inspections are identified either on the plans or on the DSA, what we call the Division of State Architect Form 103 that accompanies the plans and specifications. The, the district, the DSA Form 103 is a list of special inspections and structural tests that are required under the 2019 California Building Code for this project. Staff has reviewed and recommends that this item return for action on the June 25th, 2024 board agenda and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Sellers.
Thank you, Director Rodriguez. The inspection, this is specifically to the bleachers themselves, the integrity of, it's not necessarily like a labor inspection and compliance with those sorts of.
Yeah, it's like a visual and, and it's implant, sort of like the shop welding, stuff like that.
Is there anything like that that's going to be required as well or?
For.
For the bleachers? I know with some of our contracts, we have to have certain other inspections in place.
Yes.
This is it?
This is it for the implant inspection. However, when they install them, they'll, we have the inspector of record and we also have inspection services that will be performed by another lab on-site. So that's, that's part of the, the, the special inspections and testing requirements on that form that I just kind of mentioned, the DSA 103. It's about 20, 20, 25 pages of list of things that we must test.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Director Rodriguez. If, if no other concerns, then we will have this returned under consent. Item number nine, number, item number 10, receive information to reject all bids for Justin Garza High School Athletic Comp. for Justin Garza High School Athletic Complex Increment Number Two Mechanical Package. JG, number nine. Director Rodriguez.
Thank you again, Board President Singh and Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis. For your information tonight, administration is recommending that the board reject all bids received for the mechanical bid package number nine for the Athletic Complex Increment Two project at Justin Garza High School. A summation of the attached bid tabulation you'll see in your attachment shows that the first two bidders were disqualified because they were found to be non-responsive with the Disabled Veterans Business Enterprise Program, what we call DIBI requirements, and warranted disqualification of the first two bids automatically. School districts using public funds are mandated to have contractors meet goals of at least 3% of their contract bid amounts for DIBI participation or show a good faith effort to locate those particular DIBI contractors and suppliers. The intent of this law is to ensure a portion of the contract dollars are awarded to those certified disabled veterans business enterprises. During the same period, the district discovered a change in the mechanical scope where some modifications to heating, ventilation, and air conditioning at the press boxes. So, the rejection of all bids is allowable under the Public Contract Code statute, and the district has exercised this option in the past with other projects. Agencies engaged in public works, such as school districts, exercise these rights from time to time. Administration is recommending that this item return for action at the next board meeting, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Tracy Millen.
Thank you. So, when this goes out to bid, there was one contractor on there that we've had an issue with in the past. Are we able to reject his bid or not accept it, even if he is the lowest bidder? Or they are the lowest bidder?
So, on the tab, yeah, so this is a rejection of all bids.
They come back to bid. I know we've had an issue in the past.
I think we would have to accept it. If he, you know, meets the requirements, then yes, we would have to accept it. We've worked with that particular contractor on a past project and didn't have any problems, and this is a recent one.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Tracy Griffin.
Thank you. Following up on Trustee Millen's question, so what happens if on that subcontractor, we still reject them, even if they're the responsible bidder?
The board has the ultimate authority to reject all bids.
Okay, so we can reject a bidder?
Yes, if, yes, you can, yes, at any point, if I bring it to you, that is the board's sole discretion.
Okay, and then, in my time on the board, we typically, it's fairly rare for you guys to bring us an item to reject a bid. So, can you go over why the other two who are non-responsive were rejected as well?
Sure. As I mentioned to you, that, so we have what's called the Disabled Veterans Business Enterprise Program requirements for this particular project.
Those were the two that were responsive?
Yeah, they're non-responsive, the first two. So, those are the first two. So, first, we call the first apparent bidder. We look over their documents and then find that they didn't really fill out the, you know, the required documentation. Either we will find it or the other contractor that's the next apparent will find it for us. So, in this case, we found the first one, then the other contractor protested on the one, once we started going in succession. So, at this time, we're thinking, and I'm going back to what I had mentioned, when these kind of things happen, we kind of look at the cost, right? We have $400,000, we have another $700,000. Where, what are we missing? Is there something that we're missing? So, we went back and dug into the plans, and then that's when we discovered that change.
There is a significant price difference.
Yes, there is.
And that was because of the disabled veteran portion?
That's what started, that's what started it.
So, when we go out to bid again, should we reject this item? Do you expect, do you have a price range that the administration is expecting?
So, that's a real good question. I'm kind of looking for it to come more likely in the $500,000 to $600,000, you know? That's, and my construction manager agrees with that. I'm crossing my fingers. They all know each other. They all, the thing with this is that they all know each other's numbers now. Makes sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tracy Carrillo.
This is an implied assumption, but I just want to make clear that it's administration's recommendation to the board that we reject these bids and we go out for new bidding on this project. And that's in the best interest of our district.
Yes, for the mechanical package only, number nine.
Okay, thank you. And, I mean, I would just, now that everyone has seen the bid numbers, well, and we've heard what the estimated amount, we of course would welcome a bid that comes below that amount and doesn't then end up charging us with those change orders at the end of the project, so that's all I have to say for this item. Thanks.
So, it seems like we can have this, we are, we can have this returned as consent, our desire for rejection of the current bids. Thank you. Thank you, Director Rodriguez. Our last item for information is to receive information regarding contracts for the 2024-2025 school year for maintenance, operations, and transportation. Director Bott.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Board Members, and Superintendent Davis. Tonight, we are bringing three contracts that the Maintenance, Operations, and Transportation Department uses throughout the year. First one is CIS, that provides our district-wide security patrol. RFP number 2223-58029 was approved on June 14, 2022. This contract was renewable each year for a total of five years. This is the second renewal of that contract. Eagle Shield Pest Control provides monthly pest control services, including insects, bugs, at all district sites, including gophers and squirrels. This is our current vendor. And RB Jensen, this is a piggyback bid through Clovis Unified that they extended and through the board-approved use of Public Code Section 20118, which allows districts to utilize cooperative bids secured by other public agencies for the purchase of materials and services. CIS's contract for this upcoming year is $198,000, which is an increase from the previous year's contract of $16,340. The Eagle Shield contract is a decrease from last year of about $7,440, and the RB Jensen is estimated to be at about $800,000 for the upcoming year, and purchases under that piggyback contract will be budgeted through the appropriate departments. Administration is recommending the board place this item on the June 24th, 25th, 2024 Board for action. After I answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Tracy Cervantes.
Just a point of order. The attachment is for Clovis Unified. Am I overlooking something?
Oh, so the attachment is for their extension, which we previously, we approved their piggyback.
Through Clovis Unified?
Through Clovis Unified, yes.
Understood.
No other questions? We'll have it returned under consent. Thank you, sir. We move to advanced planning.
It's attached and there are no changes.
Any additional information or closing comments from any of our board members? And with that, a reminder that our next regular board meeting for the Central Unified Trustees will be on Tuesday, June 25, 2024, at 6:00 PM for closed session and 7:00 PM, of course, for public session here at the Central Unified School District Office, Room 13. And with that, we will head back to closed session. Thank you.